Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th Council Study Session. We were going to get started tonight, Councilmember Goodman is excused. Just wanted to start with a reminder, as Council President Martz talked about in our last study session, this is a new format. The study session, our study sessions replace our former committee meetings that we had, and so the purpose of tonight is the council will be hearing presentations, asking questions, giving feedback, but there will be no decisions made this evening. And I will take audience comment after each one of our agenda items. So with that, I will, we will start with ID 0520, which is the Classification and Compensation Study, and that's going to be presented by Andrea Snyder, our interim city administrator and team, and I'll let Andrea take it from here and provide introductions.
Thank you. So, tonight, we are joined by the city's consultant team that helped us with this classification compensation study. First, I'd like to introduce Noel Treat with the public affairs firm Strategies 360. And next to him, of course, is Lauren Knox, a member of our HR department, who was the project manager from the city's side. And then we have Greg McNutt from the consulting firm Milliman, Inc., Incorporated. Greg and his partner, who is not here this evening, they are the technical experts that who conducted the classification compensation study and also drafted the study report that we'll be going over this evening. So with that, I think I'll kick it off to Noel.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's nice to be here with you tonight. As Andrea mentioned, I'm Noel Treat. I'm with the public affairs firm of Strategies 360. I'm not sure how strategic it was to let my item get agended right after the budget presentation, but I'm going to do my best and I'm going to be facilitating tonight's presentation. And then at different points in time, Lauren and Greg will be jumping in to talk with you as well. Just a little bit about my background, I've been with this firm just a short time, and before that, I had about 25 years in local government. Was city manager for Mercer Island, deputy superintendent for Seattle Public Schools, and I've been a city and county attorney as well. And so through those experiences, I've had a lot of work in different human resource issues, including helping organizations implement class and comp studies. So I was pleased to be able to have this opportunity to help your city move forward with this study as well. So why don't we go ahead and we'll, we'll jump right in. First, why are we here? The purpose of tonight is to help provide you with an understanding of the study. That's important because when you're presented with the salary ordinance in November, that ordinance, the proposal right now would be to base that ordinance on the outcome of the study, as well as some of the policy recommendations that are being made to help implement the study. I think, as you've gathered, the focus at this stage is on salaries. Even though the study did look in detail at benefits, the plan is to look at those and discuss those and make any decisions about those in 2020. So first, what is a class and comp study? Class and comp studies generally have two key components. One is a detailed review of job descriptions. That's important to help you determine appropriate salary levels, to help with recruiting, because you want the job to reflect the skills and abilities you really need. And then also, it's also helpful in performance evaluations, so that you can evaluate employees against the job description, the written job description you have for them. And then that's followed by an in-depth market analysis, where you look at salary and benefits to determine if you are offering competitive wages and benefits to your employees. So why do you do these studies? Class and comp studies are considered a best practice. The industry recommendation is generally to do one about every five to seven years, and that's what typically I've seen with cities and school districts is anywhere from five to seven years, they'll revise their class and comp study and implement new salary tables. I think for Issaquah, I believe it has been about 20 years since you've actually done one of these studies, so it was due. And of course, they help you set competitive salaries, which leads to improving your ability to attract and retain high-quality employees. Yet again, it helps ensure that position descriptions match the work that employees perform and the work you want them to perform, and then it helps provide greater internal pay fairness. So just a few quick words at a high level about the timeline for the study. It actually began, I think, over two and a half years ago in 2017, started with development of an underlying compensation philosophy, moved into the job description review and revision, then into the salary and benefit market study, led up to developing a proposed methodology to implement the study, and then, of course, will lead to you considering a salary ordinance this fall. First, so the first step, as I mentioned, was developing the underlying philosophy, and I'm going to turn that over to Lauren. She's going to talk with you about this slide and the next one. She was involved in both those processes and can speak well to them.
Okay, I'm stealing Noel's microphone. So the philosophy statement, so some of our councilmembers who have been around for a couple of years will remember that we brought a philosophy statement to you, I think, in late 2016, to start to think about this process. And at that time, we got good council feedback on some high-level goals that you wanted to see in that statement. The ultimate statement that you have in front of you is reflective of a couple of different things. So first of all, our strategic plan, and keeping that in mind, our goals and mission as a city. As an employer, I think our ambition is to be an employer of choice, to be the place that people come, you know, and think of a high-quality, high-performing workforce. Beyond that, on the compensation side, and to get to that ambition of being an employer of choice, we put a couple of statements in that philosophy statement about competitive compensation and benefits, that are meant to reflect what's happening in the market, current market practices, equity internally, and also financial sustainability, and making sure we have a compensation practices that we can carry forward over the long term and that help us get the quality of workforce that we hope to see in Issaquah, and I think currently have. Step two of this process, Andrea, did you want to say something?
Nope.
Okay. So, next step was to look at job descriptions and do a pretty thorough review of all the classifications in the city. That started with employees. So employees were asked to fill out a position description questionnaire and give us a lot of information about the work that they currently do. Those were then reviewed by supervisors, human resources conducted interviews with our employees to, you know, get further information about tasks. And ultimately resulted in job descriptions that were rewritten by the human resources team, and again, reviewed with employees to ensure that what we had written was accurate as to the jobs that people perform. There was, beyond the human resources touch, we did have an SLT advisory committee that sort of sat as a body that ensured that citywide, there was a, there was a look at how classifications fall out citywide, and it looks like Councilmember Winterstein, you have a question?
Oh, I could have waited, yes, thank you, Lauren. Real quickly, what level of participation from employees do we have? Is it 100%? Is that what you strive for? What happens?
Yeah, so I couldn't say exactly, but I think we were close to 100% on the position description questionnaires. I don't have the exact number. And then in terms of interviews, we also set the goal to interview every single employee. Some employees were interviewed in groups. There were, I'm certain, some that we missed, especially in pooled classifications, like I don't think we talked to every single one of our police officers, for example, but we did have that goal to have that touch point with everybody in the city where possible. Any questions before I dive back in?
Councilmember Walsh. So if the job descriptions were then written based on what an employee does, how does that give us an opportunity to make sure that the job descriptions and roles are based on what we need and not just what the current employee does in any future hiring? Interim City Administrator Snyder, please.
Thank you. I'll, I'll take a first pass, and then Lauren, if you want to fill in the blanks. What was really important in the focus of this study was not, it was making sure that we are paying our employees fairly by market rates for the work that they currently are doing. So this doesn't necessarily, the intent of this study was not necessarily to address what the future needs are of any given department or role. Certainly, that's something that we look to the managers and directors and city leadership to determine, are we getting, are we doing all the tasks that we need to accomplish? Is there something else that we need to be considering that's just not getting done? That's a different conversation. This, the focus of this work was really to make sure that, for the work that our employees are currently doing, are we paying market wages or what, what their peers would be paid in other organizations?
I would add just one thing to that, which is that Andrea is completely right, that the focus of a class-comp study is on accurate and fair pay and not, you know, a staffing analysis or something similar to that. However, there are a number of instances where we worked with department directors to create classifications that don't have current incumbents, that are kind of growth positions, or looking towards the future of what the department might need, that we don't currently have. So there's, it is a mix with our incumbent employees, you know, the focus is much more on fairness, but we, we did at least want to create that flexibility for our organization Okay, and I'm actually going to now turn it over to Greg from Milliman to talk about the technical compensation market analysis piece.
All right. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Greg McNutt, and my, my colleague Cody Nelson could not make it. He has an awful case of strep throat, so we didn't think he wanted him here. But what my, Milliman's role, and I've been with, I should tell you a little bit about myself. I've been with Milliman, which is a compensation benefits international firm, but based here in Seattle. I've been with them 17 years next week, but I've been doing this kind of analysis for about three decades. A lot of our work has to do with both public sector, quasi-public sector and private sector. So we get the privilege of seeing a lot of what's going on in the marketplace, and it's, as I think we'll talk about later on, that the marketplace is evolving, and it's not just segmented into only public sector or private sector, but employees and potential employees are crossing boundaries these days. So our, our ask in this study was to then take what was done from the classification analysis, take the job descriptions, and do a comprehensive review of salaries and benefits to make sure that where you are aligns with what your desired place is. And if there are gaps, make recommendations on how to bridge those gaps. So this, this market survey, like you've, like you know by now, is a, what we call a total compensation analysis. We looked at salaries and all of the different elements underneath the broad umbrella of benefits. We, as a proper methodology in terms of the approach, what we want to think about is, okay, who is your market? So we talked a lot with the city leadership and human resources and feedback about who, who is it that you're competing with for, for talent, and what other cities and entities should be in that survey? Because we didn't want to look at just the broad spectrum, we want to think about the city of Issaquah and who, who you define yourselves as. And we needed to also think about, when you say the market, well, what, what is the market from a competitive standpoint? And since your pay philosophy wants to talk about being a competitive employer, we landed on the spot of using what oftentimes is called the market midpoint or median of the market, so it's the middle point as a comparison space. We also wanted to, in the end, think about proper use of salary ranges here, and what's best practice, and what's going to allow you to stay competitive while also being fiscally responsible at the same time. And thinking about some, some future steps, which are going to be, I believe, in, in the recommendations or the ordinance, about a 3% step process, and I'll explain what that means in 3% in your steps. And then finally, benefits introduced into the study. So when we think about the overall key findings, and there are quite a few here, but on a large level, we found that when we aggregated all of the different elements together, all of the different benefit elements and your salaries, and looked at the city as a whole, you're about 12% above that middle market space. Now, that's not, that's not egregious in my mind, it's not way out there, but it is market-leading. So how you get to that point is, is from a, what we call a pay mix standpoint, how you get to 12% above can be analyzed in different ways. One of those, which is the largest foundation from a cost perspective-
Councilmember Winterstein, excuse me for a moment.
Pardon the interruption. And if you're going to get this, this information later on, just say so. I saw that in the materials, 12% across the board. Do you have that same number, say, by department? We look at operations, or engineering, or parks, or-
We do. We provided all the background data to the human resources department, so-
Is that in your report? I didn't see it in the report, so-
It's, it's a good question. It's, it's cut by overall and by employee, and, and we can provide it in, in table format by department as well.
Yeah, Councilmember Winterstein, I'll add, you know, we, we have certainly the aggregate data to be able to pull that together, but we don't have that in either Milliman's report or in the city's materials at this time.
Any other questions at this time? So a large part of the overall cost to a total compensation package is salaries. Salaries are a fixed cost, and they're usually, as a percentage, they are the largest unless, unless you're in a unique, different kind of situation. So in the case of salaries here at the city, it's about 5% above the middle of the market. Now, that doesn't mean every job and every person is 5% above. It means on aggregate, so altogether. Some are going to be higher and some are going to be lower, which is naturally expected to be that way. And finally, the majority of employees, now there are some outliers, the majority of employees are within, and what we call an appropriate range around that middle market number, and we typically think of that as about an 85% to 115% type of range around that, if you will. So the good news is, while not everybody's at the same number, they're all pretty much gathered within an appropriate range. So what you're, what we're recommending, and I'm sure we can have some discussion about why this number, but we, as part of this project, took a look at the pay scales, the salary ranges here at, at the city, and there are, there are various forms of them, and we found that, both from a market perspective on, on the right amount, the number per step, and how it's organized, that there are opportunities to improve here. So what we're going to recommend is a salary step system, a table. Currently, it's based on a 5% increase per step, and we're recommending a 3% increase per step, which is aligned quite, quite well with what the rest of the market is doing. And then, while there are no decisions, as I understand, to be made on benefit changes, that will be addressed in 2020, our role here is to give, from the study, information and data for leadership and the council to make an informed decision down the road on what the different benefit offerings are. In aggregate, you, the city is, is competitive. It's near the, what's called the 75th percentile of the market, or the third, or the, approaching the fourth quartile of the market. So the benefits are a nice competitive advantage here, and I think some discussion will have to be made down the road about what the city wants to offer, employee demographics, what matters from a payment standpoint, and how it all fits into a total compensation package.
Councilmember Martz.
Can you explain what you mean by a salary step?
Yes. A salary step is usually an increase to base salary, usually on an, on an annualized basis. So at the end of the year, you're going to get your pay increase, how most people think about it, to your salary, so it's a percentage increase added on to your current base salary.
Sorry, I have a follow-on. So we're going to be looking at 3%, and that's in lieu of cost of living?
Well, how the city determines the rationale for what you're going to base pay increases on, we didn't get into the mechanics of why, that is. Most organizations think of it as a tenure-based type of system, so it's based on your seniority in the job, and it accounts for what the rest of the market is actually providing in terms of increases to salaries. Whether you turn that COLA, cost of labor, or just salary increase, it is the award given to the base salary of the incumbent.
I was just going to add really briefly. So the city is currently on a grade and step system, which means that we hire employees in at a certain step every year. Typically, you get a step increase, those increases are 5%. They are based on tenure, but also there's some performance elements to that as well. That is typical to what you'll see in our surrounding jurisdictions, not typical in the private sector, but certainly typical of other cities to have a step-based system. Steps are usually separate from any kind of COLA determination, so most cities would do, you know, you have your steps until you're at the maximum of your range, and then any COLA increase would be on top of that. And the city traditionally has operated in that way as well. What Greg's speaking to is some of the, you know, public and private sector mix of offering a total increase per year of about 3% is on average. So the recommendation from Milliman is to then get us a little bit closer to that market average, if that answers the question.
Interim City Administrator Snyder, and then Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. By way of example, to help add on to what Lauren was saying, is the proposed budget for 2020 that the mayor just transmitted does include a 1% COLA in addition to 3% steps.
Councilmember Walsh.
That was kind of what I was going to ask. So then, in 2020, if we adopt this, the comp plan and the budget, our employees, our non-represented employees would see a 4% salary increase annually, whereas before, which is the combination of the COLA and the salary step, whereas before, it would have been 5% plus whatever the COLA was, which it sounded like was closer to 2%, which would have been about 7. Am I right? Okay.
Councilmember Ray.
So I want to go back to the classification part of class and comp. So I understand that you did the job descriptions for all the employees, and then you took those job descriptions and you compared them to what? To establish what, what the relative compensation band should be for that position? Can you kind of talk about that methodology for us?
Sure. I'll start off, and then I think Greg will probably want to chip in as well. So yes, we updated the job descriptions to ensure that what we sent to Milliman for the compensation study review was accurate as to what employees are currently doing. Milliman then takes those descriptions, and Greg, do you want to jump in?
Jump in here? We want to make sure that, I often say, having, having your house in order first before you can do the, the salary study or the compensation study. The, the reason why is, if you don't know what you're studying in terms of job content, you may turn around bad data back to you, which is the last thing anyone needs here. So we want to make sure we understand what the job does in terms of its responsibilities, its required skills, education, and so forth. Once that's all clear to us, then we can take it from Lauren and move it into the, the study phase of the, how much compensation is paid to similar types of jobs in the marketplace. That in turn drives us for a recommendation of which pay grade the job should be in.
Now, did you find situations where we called something a, a horse, and when you read the job description, it sounded more like a cow? And then how did you rationalize those, and do you have crosswalks on that stuff?
I wouldn't want to call any of our employees cows, but just-
I wouldn't want to call horses either.
Yeah. But yeah, certainly, there were instances where, you know, jobs change over time, tasks that people do change over time, and where the current description did not match the tasks that people were performing. And so we did make recommendations to then change the descriptions for some employees. Many, you know, a senior engineer tends to be a senior engineer kind of thing, but there are others that are a little bit more unique to Issaquah. So certainly, we did that work, and then, you know, when Greg and Milliman take that out to the market, they're creating a summary of sort of what the job content is, what's the level of responsibility for our sister organizations to then match to, and for us to also use some published survey data to be able to match those jobs accurately.
Great, thank you.
So if there any, aren't any other questions on this portion of the slides? We've got some, some more to follow up here.
All right. So, once you've got the key findings from the study, the next question, of course, becomes, how do you, how do you implement the study? What decisions, what policy decisions do you make about that? And your senior leadership team has carefully weighed a number of different factors. Some of the key factors they look at are displayed on this slide, and they've developed a proposed methodology for how to implement the study's findings. One of the fundamental components of that, of course, in line with the recommendation from Milliman and what you see as best market practices, is to set the city's salary target range at 85% to 115% of that market midpoint. And again, this has been mentioned, but currently, this, the proposed methodology for implementation is only applicable to non-represented employees. As you know, salaries are a mandatory subject of bargaining, and while the study and the methodology recommendations will be used to inform bargaining, there won't be changes to union salaries until those contracts are negotiated in the future. But certainly, this information will inform those negotiations. So the target salary range, 85% to 115%, but then you also have to make some decisions about how do you align current city salaries to that target range? And the senior leadership team worked this through. There were some difficult decisions involved. Obviously, anytime you're looking at potential salary reductions or freezes, those have real impacts on your staff. And I'll also add, some of the senior leadership team are in these categories of employees who are going to be impacted. So they worked through that carefully, and they've come forward with the following recommendation to help align city salaries with this target market range. And so just to summarize those, those salaries that are below the range will be moved up to the bottom step of the new ranges. For those above that top step, so in other words, above 115% of the market midpoint, those employees' salaries would be frozen. For the handful of employees who are above 125% of the midpoint, the proposal there is to reduce those salaries down to 125% of the market midpoint.
Just a moment. Councilmember Ray.
So I just, I'm going to rewind just a tiny bit. So we're going to 3%- So we're going to 3% steps. How many steps in our scale, or in our table?
It's 11 steps total.
11 steps? And so are we setting the midpoint based on this, of that table, at step five, six?
Six.
Six?
Yeah, so if you, just mathematically, you know, if you have an 85 to 115% range, that's 30%, so broken out into about 11 steps, and then six is the midpoint, yes.
Great, thank you.
And then, to help mitigate the impact of those reductions, at least to some degree, the proposal is to phase in those reductions with half occurring this July and the other half occurring next January. And then finally, the recommendation is to move to the 3% step table.
Interim Administrator Snyder.
Thank you. I just want to interject at this point that, you know, thank you to Noel for going over this. These conversations were not easy to have with the senior leadership team. This, you know, as we talk about salary freezes, as we talk about salary reductions, this is difficult. We understand that it affects the lives of our employees. Our employees, by the way, when we talk about those who are making over 125% of midpoint, that doesn't necessarily mean the highest-paid employees, right? So while there were members of the senior leadership team who are affected, it just means that you're 125% over the market for that position. So it could be that these individuals are making even less than median income, right? So, knowing that these decisions that we've been making and the discussions we've been having affect people's lives, they affect their households and families and how they pay the bills, and I just, I wanted to take that moment and pause because it is something that we considered very carefully, and we had to balance values in terms of the values that Noel presented in the beginning of the presentation about. We want to be financially sustainable, yes. We want to be responsible stewards of the public funds. And we also want to be an employer of choice and to treat our employees well. And so, weighing all of these values, this was the recommendation that came out of the senior leadership team. And it was a very difficult series of discussions. We didn't take it lightly, and I just wanted to make sure to make that point across. Thank you.
Councilmember President Mart.
Does this policy affect mayor, city administrator, and city deputy administrator salaries?
I can answer that one. We did not survey mayor salaries in the classification and compensation study. I believe, I would have to go back, but I believe that's a separate process. We did survey for city administrator and deputy city administrator, and those results are included in the report that you'll see.
Thank you.
Other questions right now? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So then, financial impact. If you implement the study with the proposed methodology that I just described, the financial impact for this next year would be just over $150,000. That's driven by adjustments for the positions that were below market. It's driven by placing employees on the new salary schedule, which has, will affect salaries to a degree. And then also increased employer taxes that the city has to pay as a result of some of those modified salaries. What this doesn't include is the financial benefit of shifting from the 5% table to the 3% table. So that's not factored into this number.
Councilmember President Mart.
That impact, is that in the favorable, or is it, we paying an extra 150, or getting 150 back?
This is a cost. This is a new cost. Because you've got, you know, several employees in those two buckets, the purple and the orange there on the left, with increased salaries as a result of implementing the plan, there is an increase in that cost, along with an increase in taxes that the city has to pay. But what's not in that number is the savings you'll see, especially over time, from a shift to a table that only has 3% steps as opposed to the current five.
Councilmember Walsh.
Does this also represent, then, the cost savings from those employees that are over the 125 that are going to be show cost reductions?
It does. So, because we phased in the reductions over, you know, we're doing half of an annual amount for half of 2020, the 2020 impact is actually only a quarter of that full amount. So that would be a bigger impact in 2021 and a bigger savings to the city from the The other thing that I just wanted to explain in a little bit more detail in reference to Councilmember Mart's question was, because we're on a step system, if employees' salaries are between steps in the new range, we need to place them on a new step, which results in small increases for most employees, anywhere from, you know, $100 to 3% essentially.
Then one other thing we wanted to be sure to highlight for you is that, and you've gathered this from earlier parts of the presentation, there has been employee communication throughout this process, which is important. Informing employees about the study occurred when the study was launched, and then, of course, during the process of job descriptions, employees were engaged in that. In terms of employees who are proposed to be affected by a freeze or a salary reduction, supervisors have met personally with each of those employees to let them know how this proposal would affect them. All non-represented employees are receiving an individual letter about the proposal and how it might affect their salary going forward. And then finally, after council action, final action, an additional letter will be provided to each employee to inform them of the outcome and how their salary will be impacted by the council's final decision in November. All right. So that brings us to timing and next steps. As I mentioned earlier, the key step for council is to adopt a salary ordinance in November, along with the budget. As mentioned, benefits will be discussed and considered in 2020. And then, I'll also note that there are some related city personnel policy updates that will probably be coming your way as well. Some of your policies deal with classification and compensation. But there's also some things that you might want to look at in terms of revising your policies to set the stage for better attracting and retaining employees over time. So you'll see that probably next year as well.
I have a question on the review of the city benefits package that's happening in 2020. So at this time, do employees of the city receive an overall, an overview of what their total compensation is?
That's a great question, and we don't typically provide that to employees. Sometimes as a recruiting tool through SHUR, we'll provide that information, but we don't provide a dollarized, you know, your total salary plus benefits, total compensation package is this amount.
Okay. Is that something that's being thought about for the future as you go forward into 2020 with the benefits review?
That is a great question, and I think that's something we could look at. Andrea, looks like she has comments.
Interim City Administrator Snyder.
I, so to answer the total compensation number, we don't provide that in a report, but it is in the pay stub that an employee receives what the total value is of their benefits that they receive per pay period. That's something that employees do receive information about. And forgive me, I missed your second question.
No, that answered it. Sometimes it's helpful when you get a sheet in front of you that talks about your total compensation, so that's why I was asking the question. Thank you for the answer. Other questions right now?
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Ray.
Two questions. Why are we deferring the benefits discussion until 2020 when this is really a total compensation study?
Interim City Administrator.
It's really a question of timing. So, we have received this information fairly late in the year, especially as it gets close to open enrollment for our benefits for employees. That's happening right about now, as well as setting the budget. And so, we received the information late at this time. By the time we received the information, the only thing that we could implement in the 2020 proposed budget was salary, the salary part of the compensation. And that's why we're looking to the remainder of the compensation as a 2020 work item.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is a question or a statement. I think it's more of a statement. Since our, based on what you said, our benefits are generous, above market, 75th percentile. We are tagging compensation, which is just salary compensation, to midpoint. So when we factor in the higher value of our benefits, our total comp is going to be above midpoint. And since we're adjusting people up in this, so I just want us to know that we're not talking about total compensation being tagged at midpoint to the market. We're talking about a total compensation for being tagged to something above midpoint when we look at benefits and salary.
I would like to note a couple of things in reference to that that I think are helpful data points for council. First of all, especially since the city went self-insured with medical benefits, we do a review of our plans every year to ensure that those funds are fiscally sustainable and have made a number of changes to our medical package in recent years to reflect changes in the market outside of the classification and compensation study. The data that Milliman had actually, you know, did not even fully represent that picture. So they, council is aware that we moved to a $250 deductible plan this year. The Milliman study included our $0 deductible plan, so that change is not captured in this data. Another thing I'd just like to point out is, you know, as you look through, you'll see things like that retirement benefits are high, 75th percentile, and that's driven a lot by our PERS requirement, which is a state mandated requirement. So while I certainly hear Councilmember Ray's question, I just want council to be aware that those are things that we're looking at on a regular basis outside of the context of a classification and compensation study.
Councilmember Walsh.
Will we be able to have the conversation or have any sense of where we're going with reviewing the benefits package before we start in on the larger conversations with our represented employees? Because I know we have several of those conversations happening next year. Is that going to be able to be included, or is the timing off on those?
No, certainly, there's a number of different ways that we can address that with our bargaining units, and I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail in an open session, but certainly, if we have changes that we know we want to implement in 2021, we'll make sure those are on the table. If we're, if we have some uncertainty in our benefits, we can do things like have a benefits opener in a contract to say, you know, we're confident with our benefits through 2020, but in 2021, we want an opener, that kind of thing. So that there are other tools, is all I'm saying, that, yeah.
I have one more question, just in regard to the five to seven-year, this may be for our consultants, in regard to the five to seven-year window in terms of looking at class comp again. So it sounds like that's the industry standard. The seven-year side of things seems like a long time, so I just wanted to get a little more information in regard to that.
That sounds like my question. I think seven, just as an independent person here, I think seven is a little bit of a stretch because things can change in terms of the, what jobs are being asked to do, the content of them, as well as what's going on in the marketplace. Certainly, this has been a study that's been a long time in the making, having been a couple of decades. And I would encourage a city to think about, you know, on the side of five years, probably. Seven is getting out there a little bit. Not unheard of, but...
Thank you. Lauren?
And yeah, just again, more information. So, council is also aware that, you know, every time we bargain, we do a total compensation review for each of our unions. So, those are being reviewed on, you know, a two-year, three-year cycle. We also do review positions as they come vacant. So, there's some mechanism there to, while we're recruiting for a position, ensure that the job description is accurate. If the salary appears to be way out of line, you know, that's something we can deal with on an occasional basis outside of a full classification and compensation study.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just quickly on that point, some of the type of personnel policy changes that you might make address some of those things about reclassing positions on a different cycle if you're determined to be out of market for particular positions, along with codifying a set city schedule, five or seven years, wherever you decide it to be, to do these larger studies. So that's the type of thing you're going to see, I think, in some of those proposed policies.
Okay.
All right. I think that brings us to the end for final council input. As you noted in your council memo, there were three options listed. Option one is to adopt the salary ordinance with the implementation methodology that was set out. That's the administration's recommended option. It syncs up salaries with market, it balances financial stewardship, and so that's recommended for council. The second was to not make changes, essentially carry forward your existing salary ordinance in some form. That would keep you out of sync with the market, it would keep you on that 5% salary table. And then, the third option was input on other adjustments council might want to have the administration look at.
Deputy Administrator Moon.
Moon, I'm so sorry, Andrea.
It's okay.
Okay.
That's all right.
Snyder, sorry.
No worries. So just to be clear, while these are the options that have been put forward to you in your memo and tonight's presentation, there is, there can be no council action on these tonight, so we're not asking for your action. What we are asking for is discussion and guidance. If council wants to make changes or other adjustments, then we'd like to have that information now so that we can be doing that for the budget process and make, have the time to make the changes that we need to do. Again, not asking for a decision, but if there's certain guidance that you need us to go and crunch numbers for or something for you, that would be helpful for us. Also, option two, if you want to maintain the current salary structure, again, that's just going to take some time for us to plug it into our software system and change what's been inputted in the proposed budget. So that's the type of discussion that we're hoping to have from you tonight, or if there's additional information that you need before you can make a decision whether to adopt or not adopt. Also, would like to know what information you need. So, thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Can you go back four slides? This looks, oh, sorry, no, one more. Go back, forward one, sorry. You answered the question earlier. This is if we did nothing versus the recommended changes, this has an additional cost, this adds to this. You also explained how, if we adopt the 3% step, how that changes the going-forward projection. I would like to see those numbers as well. So, in other words, it's one thing to look at it as what impact it has on one year, but as a policy shift like this, give me a better idea of what it means in outgoing years. Oh, I actually do have one more question.
Go ahead.
Greg, I think it's for you. It's got to be pretty tough to find matches and job descriptions between what was compiled as part of this effort here and then what may or may not be available publicly from other jurisdictions. That's a science in and of itself. Because is this, are they really talking about the same thing? Is that task the same task? Is that deliverable, the same deliverable? Is this really the same department? Give me, if you could just give me a high level about that, that is a challenging task. And a lot of what we're doing here is based upon probably some human assessment of whether , yeah, I think these are the same job or not. Could you talk to a little?
Sure, that's actually a wonderful question, because there is some art and science to it. And some of it is learning to read and also follow-up questions through... And some of it is learning to read and, and also follow-up questions through an interview process with either the employee or the supervisor. But our experience, and I think most compensation consultants would tell you, there's, there's, it's hard to find a purely 100% match out there. So what we strive for is thinking about the, the essence of the job and the, and the requirements of it. So what we strive for, and we did document in our full report, that we strive for a certain percentage. And even that is a little bit of an art that we look for, at least an 80 to 90% what we assess as match. So it might be, you know, a certain, like a Granny Smith apple versus a Gala, but we're not talking apples and oranges. That's, I know that's some art talk there. But the way a lot of public institutions, cities, counties, and so forth, is they tend to bucket types of jobs in similar types of groupings and classifications. So it's, it's pretty remarkable that you can go from one entity to the other and find similar types of jobs. Another piece of the art is thinking about, now, it might not be the 100% match, but we also want to think about attraction and retention of similar types of jobs. And while it might not be exactly the same as a city down the road, you could probably run a risk factor of losing somebody into that other job because the person has the traits, the skills, responsibilities to do that other job at perhaps a different pay rate. So we're trying to get as close as we can, but it's not always perfect, albeit.
It's all humans in the loop. Thank you.
Other questions at this time? Anything else?
I have some guidance.
Okay, we're also going to, we're going to go to public comment and come back and have some time for discussion. Okay, so at this point, if there's anyone from the audience that would like to come and speak to all of us this evening, anybody in the audience that would like to come and give public comment? Last one more time, anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and give public comment? Okay, great. So we'll go back and we'll start with Councilmember Ray and have a discussion.
So, nice job, great work, very comprehensive, well overdue, so those are all for sure. I'm really reticent to make compensation changes without understanding the total compensation, the value of the total compensation package. And Lauren, I believe what you said is correct, because in a two and a half year study period, I would be shocked if things didn't change. So we're, we're working, I think, in, we're being asked to make a decision that's actually going to adjust people's pay without complete information, since we, this is a total compensation package. So, you know, just me personally, I'm really reticent to say, ah, we're going to adjust your pay up or down, and then, oh, we've got some new information coming in next year, and then how do we factor that in? So I don't know how we're going to deal with that, given the timeframe, but I'm, I don't want to mess with people's pay twice.
Thank you. My guidance would be to proceed with an agenda bill as you propose here. And as, but I do want to respond to what Chris said, because I think it's a fair point, and I have those considerations on complex issues from time to time as well. So do we really, do we want to do this once, should we, or is twice okay? But I was actually thinking about that before Chris asked that question, and I got to a place which was, it's not going to be perfect. I'm going to have to deal with the best information and the options in front of me today. So as you were talking, Chris, I'm thinking, you know, I'm, I'm willing to consider this as a salary component or only, recognizing that the rest of the picture will have to be addressed in the future. But I appreciate very much, Chris, for articulating that and giving me a chance to respond that way.
Councilmember Walsh. So I also have concerns toward that idea, but at the same time, I am recognizing that this was timed to come right after the budget presentation, and we are facing a shortfall. And I am in particular interested in making not just temporary freeze changes, but also directional changes so that we don't continue to face budget issues. When we're talking about our operations budget, people and salaries are a big portion of that. And so to recognize that we're stewards of the public dollar and need to have a direction as thus, I do appreciate that even though we may not be able to get all of the benefits information, that we're willing to act on salary at this point so that it can be included rather than delay it another year. So my direction would also be to move forward as suggested. Councilmember Hunt.
My guidance is that we've heard that best practice is to do this sort of study every, more on the five-year scale rather than the seven-year. I noticed in the guiding principles that it says with regular audits, approximately every five to seven years, and that's in our guiding principles. So not only does it, not only is it guiding, but it's also approximately, and it's also five to seven. I think we can try to put in as a guiding principle to go for that five, and I think the positions are changing. Jobs, roles are changing with new technologies, and that's just the nature of market. So I would like to make sure that we at least strive for the five years. And then, as far as what other information, I would just, in the final presentation, like to make it clear that the, the rules as far as the adjustment up and down is applying to everyone, because that's my understanding, and I think that would be important in the final agenda bill that comes forward, is that for all the jobs, if you're above this percent, you have this, and if you're below this percent, you have this, and it's regardless of the job.
Council President Marts.
Thank you. I appreciate Chris's point, and I appreciate the idea of measuring twice and cutting once. But I'm okay with doing this separately, because it's really, to me, a fundamentally different process. Salary is, for better or worse, about being in a free market and understanding the market and understanding what it takes to hire good people, but also being extremely careful with the taxpayers' money. Benefits is a different animal to me, because benefits have to do, to me, more philosophically about a core set of things that every employee should have from their employer or from their federal government, however you want to call it, but, you know. So to me, it's, it's a, it's a very different process. It's very personal around salaries, and this is going to affect some people positively and affect some people negatively. But benefits is really a more philosophical conversation and gets at what we as a people consider basic, sort of, I don't want to say basic human rights, but the basic functions that go into being employed and in the 21st century in the United States. So sorry to go philosophical, but punchline is, it's a different animal, and I'm okay having it separate.
Thank you. So I, first of all, it's, it's been 20 years since we had a class and comp study, which is a very, very long time to wait. It's really important to keep current with this kind of information, and so I, I am really focused on the question that I asked about, trying to keep this in the five-year, or at least five to seven year, but I think the five-year range. I would, I would say that I'd like to see this go forward into an agenda bill. I, it, every time you go through class and comp studies, it's painful. It's tough when we're dealing with having to adjust salaries. I wouldn't want to wait just for me, because that is only going to start to snowball. And I think that going forward, making the adjustments now is really important. I was the first person to ask about total comp, but wanted to kind of go back to my initial question. I, I too see this as a little bit differently. When we, in my past, when we work on class and comp, we are very focused on salary and, and comparable salaries across where competition would be. Going forward into benefit negotiations is a very, a very different process. And so I would want to see the class and comp looked at and then be able to go forward there. On the benefits side of things, part of the reason that I asked that question is that we do have these really robust, wonderful benefits. And that's, you know, a big part of that, you know, comes out during negotiation and what, what the city is able to provide for all of the employees, which is a great package. Sometimes being able to see those coupled as an employee, I think, can be, can be great, because it, it gives people a better understanding of what those benefits are, are worth. But I would not need to have those completely coupled. I think that going forward with this class and comp study, taking the information that we have and doing adjustments now would be really important.
So with that, I'll turn this over to interim city administrator Snyder. And is there anything else that you need from council?
At this time, no, but I would like to just reiterate what I've been hearing from the majority of council. What I've heard is to move forward with option, the first option, to move forward with an agenda bill, to adopt a salary schedule as recommended. And I also heard several comments about trying to make sure that we strive for five. I like the way that that rhymes. So, that we'll strive to do this study certainly more often. 20 years, I think we all agree, is a bit long. So that's what we have heard from the majority of my council, and so that's what we will bring back to you at a later time. And I think salary ordinance is coming to you through part of the budget, so it might be later October or early November.
Councilmember Winterstein.
And I ask for that additional information. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, well, with that, I just wanted to thank everyone who participated. I've been through a lot of class and comp myself. It's always tough. It's a lot of work. And so thank you to the HR department and the consultants, and thank you for the presentation this evening. Go ahead, interim city administrator Snyder.
I was just going to ask if it would be possible to take a small recess?
Absolutely. We'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
And we are back. We are going to now move into IDs. We are now going to move into ID 0568, the Southeast 43rd Signal Improvement Funding Options. And this will be presented by Andrea Snyder, our interim city administrator.
Thank you. And I have a few friends in the audience that I may need to phone. So our director of finance is here, as well as our director of public works engineering. So they may need to come up and help as well, depending on the questions that council asks. So wanted to discuss with you, come back to council regarding Southeast 43rd Signal Improvements Funding Options. The purpose of this evening is to seek direction from council on whether to fund the Southeast Signal Improvement Project solely with existing debt capacity or a combination of existing debt capacity plus revenues from a new transportation capital project funding stream that's yet to be approved by voters. So that's the question for this evening. And a little bit of background, I know council is very familiar with this project, but for those who are watching from home, or perhaps a few members here tonight, we're not as familiar. Highlighted in the purple area on the map, that is the project area for the signal improvements. The project would realign the entrances to Providence Point and Forest Trail and install a new traffic signal at their intersection with Southeast 43rd. It is also in the adopted CIP for 2020 through 2025. And also by way of background, council provided direction through the adoption of the CIP budget to prioritize this project in 2020. And what we heard through the council deliberations for the capital improvement project, or CIP, is to use existing debt capacity and also to consider using a voter-approved revenue as a secondary source of funding. During those CIP deliberations, the administration promised to return in the early fall to discuss more of what that, that third bullet there looks like of using voter-approved revenue as a secondary source of funding and to be able to discuss that more fully with council. So we promised to return in early fall. Here we are. That is what the purpose of this meeting is, to have a more in-depth discussion. Since last time, or since last time we talked about this during the CIP deliberations, the administration has moved forward on the planning process to complete the project in 2020 as directed. We plan to return to council later this fall, for example, to seek approval on an inner fund loan that would cover the costs of bidding the project and any other costs the city would incur before bond proceeds become available. And we've also gathered a bit more information to help inform this conversation as to whether or not council would like us to consider using a voter-approved revenue as a secondary source of funding. So let's talk about timing. This timeline is available in the agenda packet for this evening. And what I want to discuss is how all these pieces fit together. So there's option one in green and option two in orange. There's a couple of things to consider when we are talking about how to fund Southeast 43rd. As I intimated earlier, we look to fund the project primarily through bonds. And in order to issue bonds, the city first has to undergo a financial audit. And that audit is scheduled to take place October through February, so October 2019 through February 2020. And then, in order to issue those bonds, council needs to pass a bond ordinance. At the time of passing a bond ordinance, we need to disclose all of the revenue sources that we would anticipate for the projects that are to be funded by that bond. So because of that, this is where the differences come into play between what you see in green, option one, to fund using existing debt capacity, and option two, which is to use a combined source of revenues, existing, maybe using existing debt, existing debt capacity, but also consider a ballot measure to help pay as a secondary source. So where you see the differences here is where the ballot measure comes into play. If we were to move forward with option one, existing debt capacity only, that would mean that public engagement would start really next year, early next year, January 2020, on what are the, does, community engagement on whether or not we should put forward a ballot measure, also community engagement on what are those projects, and have those council discussions as well. We would look to form the ballot language typically in June or July. Council would approve it in July, to submit to King County in August. And then, of course, the voters would approve it, if this is what we're moving forward, with the voters would approve it in, or vote on it rather, in November. If we're looking at option two, which is to consider funding Southeast 43rd using revenues from a voter-approved bond measure, should one be approved, then that changes the timeline a little bit because we would need to disclose in the bond ordinance and to the banks and investors that we would anticipate any additional revenues from a voter-approved source, that would need to be included in the bond ordinance and in the information that we put forward. So that would mean, our bond council has advised, that we would need to adopt that ballot measure language at the time that we issue the, or, excuse me, that council would adopt the bond ordinance. And so that really speeds up the timeline and changes the timeline on engagement. So that's what that last column there is in orange. And it's showing that the engagement piece would be occurring through October of this year and January of 2020, right in advance of when we would approve the bond ordinance. And so what that means is if we were to use any voter-approved revenues or, or want to put this on the ballot, then we would have to go through this process of public engagement, council discussions, et cetera, now through basically the end of the year or January, during a time when council is deliberating budget, during a time when it's also a little difficult to engage the community because there's holidays, it's getting to be holiday season. And that would also, because, because public engagement is difficult to do after ballot measures are passed, we don't want to be campaigning for any issue from the city perspective. So we're limited in the conversations we can have with our community, the types of information that we can put out, certainly. So public engagement would be very minimal on this topic from February through really the vote that would be put forward in November. And so you can see the differences in the timelines with the conversations that we can have with council and certainly with the community if we were to consider option two. So those are the main differences between these two options. So financial impacts and looking at these two options. Option one, using existing debt capacity only. The 2020 proposed budget that you received today is balanced while contemplating the costs that we would be incurred in 2020 for construction of this project, Southeast 43rd Signal. For option two, if, if a secondary source of funding were to be used, if voters were to approve it, then it may provide some relief to the general fund in the future, but it doesn't really change impacts on the 2020 budget. And of course, as we know, if we decide to put forward a measure before voters, of course, we don't know if it would be approved. So voter approval is definitely not guaranteed at this point. And we haven't also decided if we're going to put forth a ballot measure yet either. Policy impacts would be certainly option one allows for more time for council discussion. Option one allows for more time for community engagement for any ballot measure that council would like to put forward. And option two, conversation may be rushed. And where this comes into play in terms of creating policy is that without the time for quality conversations among council, without time, as much time for public engagement, it may impact the policy that's formed.
A quick question about the timeline. Could you explain again why, after the language is approved, why it wouldn't be possible to do community engagement in terms of awareness of what the ballot would be and what the issue is and what's covered and that kind of engagement?
Yes. So I, at, at the risk of saying things that I, I, so what I have been informed on is that for things that we put forward as, as ballot measures, that even if the city is to repeat factual information, that that can be perceived as campaigning, just as an example. And of course, the city cannot campaign for an issue that's put on the ballot and be seen as doing so. We can only provide factual information. And that in some cases, cities have, are at risk with PDC guidelines if they even repeat factual information. So that's, that's part of the concern there is that we would be proceeding with extra caution to make sure that we are not in violation of any of the regulations or guidelines around campaigning and public agencies.
Okay. So then, in both timelines, there wouldn't, there would be minimal opportunity for the city to provide information about what the ballot measure is between when the language is approved and when the vote actually occurs. So it really has to be clear in the language because that's really the only opportunity after the, the language is submitted.
Yes. And so, and having a longer time period for that public engagement to make sure that if we have a ballot measure, that we are making sure to have public engagement around that, to have the public help inform us if that's something that they are wanting to do. Also, on the projects that the public would like to see, having more time to have those conversations would also help raise awareness of what those projects could be. And so the concern is, is that if we have a rushed timeline, that, that may not be as much of a quality conversation as we would want to have with the public for any ballot measure.
Council member Winterstein?
Thank you. I want to restate back to you what I think I heard, then I have two questions. This is what I heard is council gave the direction and administration honored that and is going forward and planning to finish any design and construct this project beginning in 2020. We are going to have to borrow some money to have the cash to get that done. And our current, and the two options are just use existing cash on hand that we expect to get from the general fund, or use that and maybe this other source to pay off our obligation for that loan we're going to get, right? Could you go back to the, the schedule slide? It would have been really good on here because I don't think it would have changed between the two options of actually showing kind of our timeline for construction. If you put that on there, you would see that it's no different between the two. This is not a question about whether we're doing the project or when we're doing the project. It's, it's about when we apply for a loan, what are we putting up as a source of money to pay that loan back? So my, my question is, I guess really I only have one is, my question is, what difference to our, our application, if I may call it that, for the loan, I'm using layman's terms, right? How necessary or, or what improvement or what benefit would the city gain if this additional source of money was part of our loan application? And I don't know if Beth needs to?
Yes. So I'm going to take a first stab and perhaps our finance director needs to come and fill in any extra holes. But that's really what this financial impact slide is about. So if we were to consider a secondary source of funding, then it may provide some relief to the general fund if that were something that were to pass to voters, passed by voters.
Okay. So, so that, so I want to make sure my question was understood. To those who are considering our loan application, what does it mean, this is a better application versus this application, general funds only or general funds and some other funds? Does it matter?
Okay. I'm going to ask Beth to come up here and help me answer that question.
Generally speaking, it won't matter. Once you issue the, the debt, we are obligating the full faith and credit of the city to pay back those loans. So they're going to want to know what the source is, but if it's the general fund alone, we're backing the full faith and credit of the general fund. If it is the sales tax, they're going to want to have some confidence that there's enough room in the sales tax that it would accommodate it. But in the end, the general fund is, is enough backing to, it should not sway any of the lenders from submitting bids for the bonds.
So thank you. That was exactly my question. Now I have a little follow-up. Would the actual terms or cost maybe vary because of a difference in that, in those?
I don't believe so. I, I haven't asked the question. It's an interesting question. I don't believe, the biggest, the biggest variable in the interest rates is our bond rating. And they're going to look at our bond rating regardless of the funding source.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Council member Ray?
So option two really isn't so much that it provides general fund relief, is it provides for non-transportation capital improvement project. More funding available for non-transportation capital improvement projects in the out years is really what, what the trade-off here is. So if we go with option one, we don't have to go through as many hoops to have the funding sources lined up for a bonding authority when we issue the bond. If we go for option two, though, the trade-off is we will be able to do more non-transportation capital projects over the next 20 years. Fair or not fair?
So it would be preserving, potentially preserving some of our existing debt capacity to go with option two. So you can say that that's non-transportation, but overall, we would have, we would be able to preserve some of our existing debt capacity there.
So another question, I'll put, put your hands on the buzzer. You can buzz in on this one. Can we call the bonds later and reissue with using a different funding source?
Not to my knowledge. That is not something, so when you issue the bonds, there is a period of time where you're eligible to do a refunding, but you don't change the funding source to pay that back at that point.
Great. Thank you.
Council member Hunt?
I am looking for clarity. I don't think that it's necessarily the non-transportation. It can be, it could be other transportation. So it's just, yeah, general fund, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions?
So we do have a few more slides here. Just going over what some of the community impacts might be for either option. Community impacts for option one would be that using existing debt capacity only, this is the previous direction that we have received from council, to use existing debt capacity. And that provides the most assurance to the neighborhood that the project is happening. It allows more time to engage the community on a possible ballot measure, if that's a direction that council would like to go. Option two, to use voter-approved revenues as Option two, to use voter-approved revenues as a secondary source of funding. We have heard from the neighbors interested in this project that the project not be put on a ballot, and even though we're suggesting that it's to be used as a secondary source, that's something that might be just a little confusing for folks to really understand. And I think that what we've heard from the neighbors that have been engaged on this topic is that they really want the city to prioritize this project for 2020 and to get it done and not subject it to a vote. And also, of course, community impacts is that it does speed up other conversations regarding a voter-approved measure. So here we are back at these options for council discussion and directions. So option one, as we stated, this is the recommended option from the administration. Option two, to use a combined, to use a combination of existing debt capacity plus revenues from a new transportation capital project funding stream that's yet to be approved, is not the recommended option. For option one, no immediate council action is needed. Based on previous guidance from that we've received from council, the 2020 proposed budget presumes using the general fund for debt payments on this project. And we would move forward with council discussions and public engagement on a ballot measure in 2020, should that be our direction. Then option two, we would be, if that was the preferred option among council here tonight, we would return to council at the earliest opportunity to engage in discussions about a ballot measure and corresponding transportation projects for that measure. Additional council meetings may be required to accommodate these discussions as we do have a pretty full agenda with our ballot, or excuse me, with our budget discussions through the end of the year. So we may need to have a few additional council meetings to make sure that we can have the discussion on any ballot measure. And also, the administration would begin conducting public engagement on the possibility of a ballot measure now through January 2020. At this time, I would open up for more questions, or we're hoping to receive guidance from council on which is your preferred option to move forward with.
I think we'll stick with the technical questions for now, then we'll move on to audience comment, then we'll come back and discuss. Are there additional questions at this time? Councilmember Hunt.
We had earlier had a conversation about it being a named project and then also the possibility of saying how much. And so I wondered if you could explain then if we were to go with option two, how the recommendation would be in terms of framing it? Because I do think it has the potential to be confusing, which is why I'm asking.
Our bond counsel has advised us that it would need to be a named project, which is one reason why the ballot language and the bond ordinance would need to go at the same time.
But would it be named as a project that is already, that is funded also out of the general fund, or would you need to get into that?
We would have to consult with bond counsel, but it would be among the projects that are possibly funded by it. I don't know that you would want to say it's funded by the general fund also because that starts to get confusing, but, so it would, it would be a named project, but I don't know that you would say that it's also funded by the general fund. But, you know, interested parties could also see that it is funded by the general fund.
Okay, and then the other part of my question is, and councilmember Winterstein asked, that the construction would be such that it would also already be happening by the time the bond, or the, sorry, by the time the ballot measure is at the voters. So it would be already under construction?
Correct.
Either way, so that, okay.
Which is, which can also be confusing for voters to approve on a project that is
Other questions? So I have a question, and trying to put this in context. We are talking tonight about whether to go forward with option one or option two. But in regard to the general fund, a question about, we definitely got a lot of information today during the mayor's budget report about different cuts that we would need to be making. An example is the utility rates. I'm wondering if it's possible to get information about, about the impact on the general fund between option one and two? And if, and if it's possible to get that information?
So for the general fund in the 2020 budget, we would still need to, because construction is anticipated in 2020, we would still have impacts to the budget in 2020, whether option one or option two. Those impacts would really be the same. What we're talking about is perhaps future impacts to the general fund through a long term if, and that would be the difference between option one and option two. But in regards to 2020, the financial impact on the general fund is really the same. So that's something that we can look into for those future years, but is that information we don't have today for you?
Okay. That would be helpful to me as we're moving forward. It just, a lot of information coming forward today in terms of different, different tough decisions that we're having to look at right now. Other questions? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open this up for audience comment, and if any members of the audience would like to come forward, please do.
I live in Providence Point. I would like to say, whatever option you choose, I will go out of my way to support your sales tax proposition to raise money for other projects. I think it is a well-thought-out project, and I really hope that it passes, and I will do everything I can, no matter which option you choose. I just want you to know that I 100% support you and the city in this, and thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Ron Emoff also from Providence Point. And what I, I too encourage option one, and really since roads are poorly supported and rated in community surveys and in other, other things that have been done, option one with the ballot measure supports additional needed transportation projects, so we can really get a bigger bang for the buck. So let's go with option one, and I think then Providence Point people can support the ballot measure. The other projects that will be on there can be, you know, high-impact ones, Newport, the pinch point, or whatever else, things that are also very critical to the city and good road improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the audience that would like to come and speak to council? Last one more time, are any members of the audience that would like to come forward? Hey, thank you. Thank you for those of you that came in and spoke this evening. And so I'll turn this back to council for discussion. Councilmember Winterstein.
This is really a non-starter in my mind. It's a total non-starter. It's option one only. And I feel strongly about that because if it was our intent to actually ask the voters to increase the sales tax so that we can do transportation projects, we addressed that question when we said go forward with option one already. If it was our intent to do, to do additional projects, save debt capacity and do additional projects, then we wouldn't have been considering, number one, we would have put, you know, we would have put this project on that voter-approved list, and we would be going down a different path. Because that strategy, when we considered it, was to save debt capacity for other purposes. Council gave direction, administration followed, said, no, let's use that capacity now, let's guarantee this project. So it seems kind of shifty to me that we even considered like, like, no, let's, let's not save debt capacity and go only use sales tax, but maybe we can. Maybe we can get it started with general funds, and then maybe later we can use some of that sales tax money to pay off the loan. So I, I'm, hopefully this hard, this discussion can just end tonight because of that. So, you know, I want us to continue with the recommendation, I really appreciate that. I know you did exactly what was asked of you to do in providing this. And again, my only ask would have been is, and I think it seems to be well-comprehended that this is not, nothing to do with whether yes or no on the project or the timing of the project. It's just like, what funds, you know, would we use to pay off the loan? So I'm in support of the recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
So I very much appreciate the administration doing exactly what we asked, which was, give us the information. We have a hard ask. If we can use some of the debt capacity, let's see if we can do that. I think the answer here is pretty clearly, we could, but it causes a lot of problems with a sales tax vote. And so from my perspective, I support option one. I think you've given very clear reasonings why that is to our benefit.
Councilmember Hunt.
I agree with councilmember Walsh. I also appreciate having the two options because I think we should consider the two options and vet the two options. And I like having options. But in this case, I think that we have some compelling reasons to go with option one. And my opinion on this has, has changed over time as we've gotten more information. So I was one of the council members that was interested in understanding better how it would work if it were to be on the ballot. I think it is potentially very confusing to have a project that is being built, and you are looking at a ballot that has it listed as something that's going to be paid for potentially by future sales tax. So I think that that's, has the potential to be very confusing and detrimental to that sales tax ballot measure. And additionally, we haven't yet considered, or we haven't yet decided on that ballot measure, whereas we have, as a council, indicated that we are interested in going forward with this signal improvement project. So it seems, option two seems like a half-measure on multiple accounts, and option one seems like the way to go forward if we are proceeding with this separately, which is, I think, what council has indicated we're interested in doing in this case, given the amount of need for this improvement. And then I also, on the timing, I think it's really not about needing more meetings or anything like that. I think that we could figure it out. It's really just, it's really just that we have said we want to go forward with this improvement project separately, and so we should fund it separately. And it would cause all kinds of issues, I think, to conflate it with option two.
Councilmember Ray.
So clearly, option one is the, is the best, is the best way to go. Thank you for exploring the options and being creative about it and bringing that back. It was really an interesting exercise in good policymaking where we got to look at the data and we got to weigh the facts, and we got to say, yeah, this is clearly the way to go. But most importantly, it's pretty awesome that we're going to be building the light at Providence Point in 2020. So yay.
Councilmember Winterstein. Oh. Mr. President Marts.
Option one, please.
So I too very much appreciate all the information that we were given, so we could have options. I did, I was interested to better understand. Option two, as I read through and we've talked through this evening, it just doesn't seem like a workable, number two does not seem like a workable solution for a lot of different reasons. Community engagement being the premier reason, and also that I think it would be incredibly confusing and to the community, and I, and I think that it would not work well with us trying to put together something on the ballot. It could be detrimental. I do, I did hear a lot of information tonight, however, during the mayor's budget, and I would just like to get information on that, but I think that we've, we've got a budget right now that includes the light at 43rd. Very happy about seeing that moving forward. So based on that, I would be focused on option one. Councilmember Winterstein.
I did have something to say. Thanks for coming back. I wanted to thank the members of the public tonight that expressed their support for our future intentions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So interim city administrator Snyder, do you have what you need this evening from council?
Yes, I think our direction is pretty clear. We will move forward as previously directed, option one, so using existing debt capacity only. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all of the community members that came out this evening. That is the end of our, of our meeting, so we are adjourned. Thank you.